Hey, good evening, everyone. We'd like to call to order the council meeting for the City of Nelson, June the 13th, 2022. And we could take a minute to say have a word of prayer. Father God, we thank you for today, Lord. We just ask that you would be with us, that we ask that you would lead, guide, and direct our decisions here tonight, Lord, that we would do what's best for our community and the people in it, Lord. We thank you for our police officers, our EMTs, our firefighters. Father God, we ask that you would be with each one of those this week and this month, Lord, be with our service folks that are here and overseas, Lord. And we just thank you for everything that you do and all the blessings that you give us, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does everybody have a chance to look at our agenda for this evening? Take a look, and then I'd like to get a motion to approve our agenda.
I might come up and we approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Call the favor. That was James and Wade Taylor. Okay, public affairs. Have anything? Please hear.
My name's Steve Johnston, you guys know who I am. Just wanted to give you an update as to what's going on in the community garden. There's been some changes. We have a building out there now that we have tiller in and lawn tools and garden tools. The entire garden is planted. We have five plots that we set aside for the people of the community of Nelson. They're already planted, everything is coming up. We brought a bunch of stuff from our personal garden for you guys to take this evening. If you have a neighbor that's needy, we would be glad for you to take some and give to them or keep it for yourself, whichever. We've already supported 14 families in our neighborhood this last weekend, and we're expecting tons more, so just wanted to give you an update on that. That's it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. Next up is going to be approval of the minutes for May 19th, 2022. That was a public hearing and special call meeting. I get a motion to approve.
I might come up and we approve.
James, you have a second?
A second.
Wade Taylor, call the favor. You know, thank you. Department of Reports, Lieutenant Downey, would you give us a report, please?
Thank you, good evening. Pretty quiet month again for the City of Nelson, that's a good thing. Haven't got any motorcycle complaints lately, I don't know if that has stopped or continued, but that's a good thing for us. But I would like to stress, because we're in the summer months, we've got a lot of crime that are going on around us, and when I say around us, I mean the ball ground in Nelson area. But keep your car doors locked, I know we've had this discussion before in the neighborhoods. Most of our crime that we're getting is coming from outside of Cherokee County, but they come here to commit the crimes and then run back to wherever they're coming from. So do some preventative stuff, keep your lights on at night, lock your doors, and if you see anybody out at an odd time of night, there's probably a reason. Don't hesitate to call us to come out there and investigate. And that's what we're running into in the south end of the county as crime is coming across from, you know, Cobb and Fulton. People are seeing people out, not calling, but once we're out there taking their report, they'll say, hey, I saw somebody here last night. Well, they've already broken into, you know, 10 or 15 cars. So don't hesitate to reach out, you're never going to be bothersome to us. That's what we get paid to do, is to keep everybody safe, so. Any questions?
I think I'm good.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up's mayor report. So the sprinklers for Kennesaw Avenue was removed when we were trying to save money before Cherokee County bid it out. I gave Justin Braun a call, he quoted us 500. It wasn't on there. So he did quote us 5,500. We've, and then we actually, I'm going to move ahead just a little bit because we can vote on it in a minute, but we went ahead and called, called, emailed Lori and asked her if they could do amendment and add that in, because it shouldn't be 5,500.
It should have been 5,500.
Okay, I can do that. So next up is SPOSS, we're still in negotiations with Cherokee County regarding the SPOSS for the upcoming cycle. I think we've reached, the mayors have all reached an agreement, and we have, they've taken it back to the county and to Jeff Morton. So, next up is Butchogging, do we have any amenities on that?
No, we already did the Butchogging, I don't want to invoice, and they're supposed to do the drain clearing after they do the Butchogging.
Can we just follow up with them and find out if they're complete and when we can anticipate the drain clearing? Yeah, we could. Next up is the Kitty Park. William Taylor, you and Nathan met, do you guys want to discuss your meeting with, is it right? It's southeast, but I can't remember, I'm bad, I don't hold that many.
Yes.
Yeah. We can talk about that then. And then the next is the funds were dispersed to the churches and the schools, and did they all?
No, we still have two.
We still have two that need to pick it up. And we've reached out to those. All right, that is, we're coming to a close on our Kennesaw Avenue project, so hopefully we can get everything done, we can get the sprinkler system added back in, maybe it'll save our plants since we're having such a hot summer. I'll turn it over to you and Miranda to do the finance report.
Inside your package you'll see the bank statements as well as the bank balances, and there's documents up there, the state of expenditures and revenues up front, further than I look. All right, so general fund and current balance, 762,982. SPOSS 3, which we are making strides in closing that out, and 12,315. SPOSS 4, 431,372. SPOSS 2, which is the old Pickens, 402,055. SPOSS 5, which is the new Cherokee County, is 688,234. The cash reserve is 167,257. The new Pickens SPOSS is 556 dollars, or 56,413. And then the grant fund is at 81,249 as of today, but we did, we're basically, once the disbursements for the churches is completed, then it's at zero. So we're waiting on the next round.
We wrote another check for the Kennesaw project. It's down to.
Yeah, so we're waiting on that.
Awesome. So while we're looking at these balances, the Kitty Park, I know it's under unfinished business, do you know what we have set aside for that dollar wise?
Yes, I don't know exactly. And off the top of my head, because we've got. Multiple locations.
And I, to take.
Okay, so as far as the Kitty Parks and stuff goes, we've got park upgrades, we've actually got allotted $208,000 that's open to be able to add additional playground equipment, parking, bleachers, shelters, basketball court. So it's a kind of a whatever it's, whatever you deem you want to do, but that's pretty open.
So I know you guys have had an opportunity to look at that, do you have a budget, do you guys have a budget in mind at all? Do you want to wait and get numbers back with the sales? The stuff that she's going to quote is going to be for sale, but the other two that folks that we've reached out to will be for, that's just going to be ready, I doubt it's going to be salvaged here, but it'll still have to be that out.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see what range she can come back with on the equipment, except the books we've had, the little tights and all's pretty well outrageous compared to what it sounds like other people can supply some of for.
So.
Probably looking at less equipment too, because like trying to figure out, from meeting with her and getting all the actual guidelines, like that lower section won't even take a swing set at the size it is right now. And I don't know if we want to put walls and stuff in. Nathan had a good idea about when we finish grading out that bank and bring the fence down, fence it in, you can have just a big play area along with the newer equipment up at the top, however y'all think. It's not a good idea. Soon to be looking at three bay swing with an extension to replace the old one, a piece of equipment, like a grand port swing, a table, like a slide.
There was a couple of picnic tables to figure out.
I know one for sure, I don't know if we can get the other one in unless we put one at the lower level.
Yeah, probably just one there.
So do we, do you want to say we can start at 25,000 and then, because it's going to be right around there, I'm pretty sure.
Well, they will do, or at least gee, they don't price the fence or the little bit of grading, so you're really going to end up with probably two different.
Yeah, so the overall cost, I would just set a budget for that.
Yeah.
So you want to admit, grading will not really a lot, especially if you just turn it into a play area.
Yeah.
Dressing up that bank, leveling it out a little bit, refining that swell, and then the fence all the way around, those would be the two biggest items for that, so.
We can start at 25,000 and then come back, we can, we set like a budget, I mean, just because we have 200,000, we still have some other projects that we need to get done.
You're talking about for the whole thing?
For the whole thing, yeah.
That's not even going to buy that.
You don't think, no?
No.
Now, even if she comes in at the equipment being half of what it was in the little tights, that'd be 25, probably just for the piece of equipment.
I thought she said the one at, the one there behind the duck pond was 21,000.
Well, you're going to have new border, all the new, and it actually is increasing the size.
But I think that's bigger than what you're going to have here.
Well, that's how much for the rest of the play area.
I wouldn't say that at 15, give you just more, obviously, that you for, you know, who kind of, the less you spend is somewhat better.
So you're probably going to better start at that, like I said, with the fence, the grading, piece of equipment, swing set, table, and the new mulch and the border and everything.
Okay.
Probably start at that.
Did any trees need to come down from that area?
We're going to try not to toast the trees, I mean.
She recommended a tree there.
Because they do supply a lot of shade down there.
Oh, they do, we look shady, it's.
The biggest thing would be setting that fence on the, looking at it from the front, the left-hand property side, and then cleaning up the bank outside the fence, just for, because that seems to be done anyway. We have a little landscaping to clean up there as well.
Obviously, fence on the, on the one side is going to, it's double sided, finished on both sides, so it'll available, available pricey to replace any.
Yeah, I was going to say, did maybe look at something that like a composite board too, that you wouldn't have to redo for years, like something that's going to stay with it, if you do, then, then what it's not going to. So we've got 208,000 in there that's just, and this is.
That's allotted for parks.
Cherokee side, is that Cherokee or is that Pickens?
That is Pickens.
This park is Pickens. So.
And it's actually going to be Cherokee, so we are, so that being said, I mean, we've still got the, I don't have my other sheet with me, but we do have the funding for government facilities on the Pickens side, so definitely.
Okay, so we are covered there, okay. Just won't come out of parks.
It just won't come out of parks.
All right.
Okay, so with that said, our fiscal year is obviously coming to a close, so we have a remaining budget of 4.85%, and we're halfway through this month, so we're looking good on that. And we do have some little amendments that we need to do within the budget on the next meeting. Basically, majority, biggest part of that is where we've finished up and cleaned up our backlog of ELME projects, so again, that was revenue in prior years, we're going to just roll that revenue back into this fiscal year to be able to make those go back.
Okay.
Yep, so we'll have that ready next time, other than that, that's really all I have. And then later on, we've got the budget and the CFP.
So so far, the only amendments we have are for the, is for the.
Yeah, that, the ELME is, we've been able to clean up that backlog, so.
Is everything's done, it's all caught up.
So year to date, we've expended 59,188 dollars on our ELME, whereas we only budget for one year at a time, but because it was already back in our, basically our fund base, we just rolled it back into.
Michael, you want to speak with your deputy in a second? Okay.
We rolled it back into our budget. And that's really all I've got.
All righty. Those amendments will go out next week or next month?
Next, yeah, I have them ready next month, I'll send them out.
All right, unfinished business, trail resurfacing request.
Do you want to give us a flash?
Yes, it's on the phone. Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
So there will be P B.
Hey, Michael Kidd, Sylvia Green here.
Hi, Sylvia.
All right, so Michael.
Listen, we're turning on the speakers.
Sure.
All righty, so Michael's going to, this was root design, and he's going to, is going to have a conversation with us about our master park plan. Okay, Mike, if you want to go ahead?
Okay. All right, I'm assuming you got the documents that I sent you?
We did.
You guys have those with you?
Yeah.
So why don't we go through the survey results first? Okay, so the first sheet is just a quick summary of the survey itself, it was mailed on March 14th. Surveys received April 8th, there were a few that came in after the 8th, but most of them came in on the 8th. Approximately 500 were distributed, there were 19 questions on the survey, and we got, we got 56 responses, which is a 13% response rate. That may sound low, but actually for a typical survey like this, that's a pretty good rate. A lot of these surveys that we do for smaller communities, where we're not necessarily trying to obtain a statistically accurate survey, we're just trying to get a community guidance on the master plan. In a lot of those cases, if we get 10% response, that's, that's a pretty good response rate. So we're at 13% response. Not only are respondents answered all the questions, but the majority of the questions were answered in the survey. And going through, we tried to just present each question, the answers to each question graphically, try and make it easier to digest this information. So the majority of the respondents are from Nelson and have lived in Nelson for quite a long time, 61%, longer than 10 years, which is good, we want response from the community, from people that know these, these parks. The parks that have been visited, the highest response was for the salt surface trail, which is probably what we would have expected. Second response was Ball Field Park, and the third response being Key Park. So that makes up the majority of the responses to that question, those three areas. How do you use the parks listed above? So about, if you dive into this a little bit, about 30%, 29% of the respondents are using the parks at least once a week or up to several times a week, so that's a good thing. Almost a third of respondents are using the parks on a weekly basis, which is good. Another quarter are using the parks a few times a month, with another third using the parks a few times a year. So you have good, good attendance right now, at least from the people that have responded to the survey. The ages of the people in the household, the two biggest categories are 0 to 12 and 26 to 64, which tells us there's quite a few families with, with children in the area, so that's a good thing to know. Question number five, how do you typically get to the parks? We wanted to know how people are accessing those parks, and it's a 50/50 split, 50% are using cars and 50% are either biking or walking, so that's good to know as well. Question number six was about the basketball court on School Street, and we asked all the respondents if they use that court. Only 13% of the people that responded said that they're using that court. The majority of the people that responded to the survey were not using the court. Of the people that use the court, about 40, nearly 40% are using it once a week or several times a week. So that may be a specific demographic, that may be the kids from, from the school, but that, about 40% with another quarter using it a few times a month, so that's about two-thirds of the respondents that are using it weekly or monthly. But you've only got 13% of the people that responded that are using it at all. We asked the same question for the half basketball court at Pickens Street, again, it was very similar response, 82% said no. And then of the people that are using it, about 30%, just under 30% are using it weekly, another third are using it a few times a month. But it's still a relatively small percentage of respondents that are using that half basketball The next page is, is our first page of comments, and just to, so that everybody understands what this is, when we received the surveys, we asked specific questions with either yes or no answers or multiple choice answers. We also received some unsolicited comments for some of these questions, and we've included some of those that we thought were important to note. We do have the, the complete surveys scanned, and you will get, we'll provide a copy of the raw surveys to the cities, that you have all the documentation, but we just pulled out a few of the comments that we thought were important to note for some of these that we received those comments on. For the, for the half basketball court at Pickens Street, we received a couple of comments, basically saying that the, that area has been used for a long time as parking for the Baptist church across the street. So we thought that was important to note. We also wanted to make sure, that, we wanted to ask you, the city representatives, if there's a way that we can make sure that the church community did receive the survey and that they were represented in the survey responses. It's, it appears that at least some of the people in that church community received it, because we got these comments about the, that area being used for parking for the church. This was the only area where we had a specific organization in the community that is potentially directly impacted from improvements that we might make on a particular parcel. So we wanted to, we wanted to just bring that up, make sure that everybody's aware of it. If there are other issues related to that that we're not aware of, you can certainly let us know that, but I just wanted to go through that quickly about the parking for the church.
Was this.
Any questions or comments on that right now?
Yeah, Michael, this is Sylvia Green, was this the only comments that were made?
For that particular question?
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and see, it's probably the majority of the comments that were made for that, for that particular question. We can go back and check, like I said, these were, these were unsolicited comments that were handwritten onto the surveys themselves. This wasn't a specific question that was asked in the survey, it was just a follow comment that we got. So we can go back through and see if there were any other comments related to that question.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I mean, I, I don't think that we were doing away with parking, so, at all, so I don't think that's an issue.
Right, right. I mean, if anything, you know, at least what we looked at initially would improve the parking and probably add some parking spaces, and I think that would be the, the goal there, so I just, we weren't aware originally that that was being used in that way, and I want to make sure that we, that we're addressing that moving forward.
Got it.
Okay. All right, moving on, the next question, question number 10, this was related to just general outdoor sports activities that, that people in the community enjoy, regardless of whether those are offered at parks, we just wanted to get a general idea of what people are doing in terms of about local recreation. Interestingly announced, the majority, the largest response was swimming. Obviously, you know, we're not going to put in a swimming pool or an auditorium in the city, but you know, there are other areas where people are swimming, but that was the highest response, that was interesting. The second two were youth basketball and youth baseball, which, which makes sense, that's in line with what we would expect. No real surprises on this. A lot of the other responses were just a few, just a handful of the, of the survey responses that we received for each category. The next question, question 11, was more about outdoor activities as opposed to outdoor organized recreation, and this was, this is in line with what we typically see for these projects as well. Majority of the, actually, every single survey that was returned, 66 of them, selected walking as one of the activities, and that's, that's common, that's, that's the most common outdoor activity that we see in these surveys. Combine that with the next two categories, jogging and hiking, and that's, that's the bulk of the outdoor activities that people are doing. The second highest response is picnicking, and that will dovetail with some of the next questions that we see in terms of what the people want to see in the parks. Then you had 17 of those respondents each for bird watching and photography. It's a decent mix of outdoor activities. The next question, number 12, what additional amenities would you like to see? So this goes along with those outdoor activities that people said they were, they liked to do. The highest response for this question was for, for additional trails. And again, I've said this before, trails are the number one requested amenity for, for most park systems around the country, so that's not surprising. Second to trails was picnic facilities, picnic shelters, picnic tables, and that goes along with that previous question as well. And then right along with that is additional seating, benches, and then shade, shades, shade trees and shade structures. So those are all real common responses, trails, seating, picnic facilities, and shade, those are probably the foremost common requests that we see in these surveys. All right, going on to the next page, so these are some comments that we received, again, for, for question 12. Nothing real groundbreaking here, there were just a few comments for each one of these that we have on here, and they just kind of dovetail with what people wanted to see. We did think the zip line was interesting, I don't know where we would put one of those, but that's an interesting comment that we got. There were three comments about a swimming pool. Obviously, I think that's, that's not part of the equation for, for Nelson's parks, but anyway, like I said, we'll, we'll share the full, the full responses, so you'll be able to see those, those comments. Question number 13, what activities would you like to see in the parks? Cornhole, surprisingly, was the number one response there, that's a, a very easy thing to, to do, it's a big, big bang for the, for the buck, doesn't cost much to do that. Pickleball courts was the second highest, so that was, that's good to know. And fitness stations, that's another. And fitness stations, that's another, another good amenity that we, that we see requests for a lot. Badminton, that could potentially be combined with pickleball. Horseshoes, pachybal, sandball ball. Those are the majority responses for the additional activities people wanted to see. All right, question number 13, this was if, if there was a nice park pavilion, would you rent that pavilion for parties and events? And 62% of the respondents said they would. So that's, you know, nearly two-thirds of the respondents said that they would be interested in renting a pavilion. And again, that's a very common thing. We find that when we, when we put in a new, nice pavilion in a park or in a community, that that's the first thing that happens is that people in the community want to rent it for birthday parties and family reunions and family gathering. It's real popular to be able to do that. People are more than happy to pay a nominal fee to rent those structures. And that can become a small revenue source that can help with maintenance costs and keep the park itself. All right, question number 15, how would you rate the overall satisfaction of the parks? So the, the majority of the respondents were either neutral or satisfied, which is good. 75%, there was a quarter that were dissatisfied. So we do want to keep that in mind and make sure that we address the concerns of the people that aren't satisfied with the parks currently and see if we can, see if we can reduce that number. Next page would be comments related to those questions. So what was your favorite thing about the parks? We received a lot of comments about this. Majority of them were for the walking trail. A lot of people like that trail, a lot of people are using that trail. So it's a great amenity for your community. A lot of people like the parks, they, they like the fact that you have a quiet, safe place to go for kids to enjoy, being outside, enjoying the outdoors. The playground, there were some comments about the playground being nice at the Ball Field Park. So a lot of good comments about what people like. Question 17, what people don't like. So there's some specific things in here. But again, relatively, you know, these were mostly one-off comments on one of the survey responses or just a couple. But somebody commented that the parks are limited to children. Somebody said they cater to the private school. Not enough shade or seating, which is something that we heard. Upgrades needed to equipment, which is something that we're aware of. More picnic shelters or centers for parties. No shade, outdated, rundown. Nothing for seniors, that was something that I think we, we heard in a few places that, that there's not a lot for seniors to do in these parks. So that's something we're going to want to take a look at with the concept plans. All right, question number 18, would you be willing to pay more in order to provide more programs or facilities or services at parks? 56% of the respondents said yes. So that's, that's a good thing to hear that, that at least a majority of the, of the respondents in the survey said that they would be willing to pay, pay at least a little bit more for nicer facilities or more programs. And then question number 19, any other suggestions that you have for improvements? Cleaning up the water tower, additional equipment for children. Would like to see the ballpark area used as multi-use, not just for one thing. That's something that we had discussed previously with the, with the previous master plan that we did for the Ball Field. Having one park for all ages, that's a really good comment. Bike trails, having movies in the park. There are, there are a few things on here, the movies, group entertainment, concerts, flea markets, produce stands. Those are programming issues. And that's really something that once, we want to make sure that when we design these parks that we are, that we're putting in facilities and designing these in a way that they can accommodate multiple uses and activities like that. So that, once the parks are there, you have the infrastructure that you need if there is interest in doing a flea market or a farmer's market or a summer movie program. You will have the resources that you need to do those things. And then it's just a matter of programming for the city to pull those, those types of programs together. So that is the last part of the survey. Like I said, we will, we'll provide you the PDF of the, we just scanned all of the surveys, all the original surveys. And we have those in a PDF format with all 66 responses. So we'll, we'll send that to you this week so that you have the full account of all the surveys. So we wanted to get this to you as the, as a summary of the highlights of the, of the survey. Any questions on the survey?
Counting, we're going to start with you, you have any questions?
Back to the area where it was talking about nothing for seniors to do. Do you have, would you be able to, like you've been doing this for a while, any good suggestions on what would be good to include for that?
Yeah, so really, one of the most common things that we provide for seniors is additional walking trails. The caveat to that is that, that we want to make sure that that a lot of those trails and walking surfaces are accessible, whether they meet ADA or they are simply easy to walk on, easy to navigate. Another thing that we would do in providing walking trails to accommodate seniors is make sure that we have adequate seating along the trails themselves. Make sure that seating is shaded. Doesn't do any good to have a bench in summer in Georgia. If it's out in the, in the middle of the sun, nobody's going to use it.
True.
So we want to make sure that we provide that seating and, and other amenities that go along with those walking trails. We, we do find some interest in fitness stations. And there are fitness stations that are geared towards older fitness activities that are easier to do. So that's another item that could be added or phased in over time. So those, those are the primary things. Outside of that, from a organized recreational standpoint, obviously, one of the fastest growing areas for older recreational activity is pickleball. So that's something that we hear a lot in these community surveys is, is interest in, in pickleball. Community gardens are another thing that, that older communities are, are interested in a lot of times. Community gardens can be tricky. You have to make sure that you really do have interest in that and that you, and that there is somebody or some group in the community that is willing to take on the management of a community garden. If community gardens aren't, aren't managed, they can, they can really get out of control and turn into a weed patch really quickly. So those are, those are some of the main things that, that we would look at. There are other things that, that we could propose as well. But those are some of the main activities that we would propose for elderly, just not elderly, but just older park users.
Being high on the list too, the horseshoes and the cornhole. You just say, well, probably designated area of lawn, maybe fence it off to keep people from crossing it or something like that?
Yeah, so those are, those are very easy amenities to add. There can be a designated area. There can be an area that, that that could be set up in that's not specifically designated for that all the time, but could be used for it, you know, on a, on a more specific basis. So those are, those are easy amenities to add and incorporate into the park.
Thank you.
Jake, do you have anything? Nathan? No. Okay. I was going to ask, because Miranda just brought it to my attention. We were talking about maybe a shade cover for the park, the big park with bathrooms, right? Do you have any plans on expanding that, the equipment there that would prevent us from adding a shade to that area?
At the actual playground?
Yes.
No, no. And actually, that's probably one of the primary things that we would recommend adding to that playground would be a shade structure or shade structures or shade trees or some combination. Obviously, we have the, the septic field that we have to be aware of there. That would need to be pinned down a little more closely. I know it's somewhere in that area behind the playground, but, but no, we wouldn't have any, any plans to expand that where you wouldn't, where it would get in the way if you were to do a shade structure there.
Okay. Well, appreciate you joining us this evening. We have some additional stuff?
Yeah, there was, just one more section that I'll have to go through with you. So we've, we've done our, in addition to, to compile the survey results, we've also done our inventory and analysis of the parks. So we've got two other documents that I've sent. One is basically a map of the existing conditions of each park. We don't really need to go through that at the moment. That's just something to have for your resources for reference. It's just identifying all the different elements that you have at the park, at the different areas that, that we're looking at. The third thing was the actual inventory and analysis document, that was a Word document. And I did want to go through that quickly because this included more of an, an analysis of those existing conditions in the, in each park. So if we could go through that, if you guys have that document available.
Let me find that. Is this one here? Okay, we're ready.
Okay. So the first one is the main park, Ball Field Park at School Street. We went through and we looked at all the different areas of the park, the creek, the retaining walls, the basketball court, all those things. I know Kelsey said that you guys have been busy up there. It sounded like the Rebecca Lodge has been removed.
Yes, that, and both walls and the old police building.
Okay, great. So we had commented on that and that was going to be some of those recommendations there. The creek that runs along the north section of that area of the park, we did want to mention there, there's a 25-foot state buffer. There's also a 50-foot county buffer on that creek. And if you look at the map, that covers almost half of the basketball court. It falls within that 50-foot buffer. So I did want to mention that. Nothing that you need to necessarily do about that at the moment. But if we start making any modifications in that area, that creek buffer is going to play a big part for that northern section. Because it's very, very specific things you can and can't do associated with creek buffer. The next thing I wanted to mention there is really down on page four. So that's the basketball court. Now, is, is the basketball court still there? You said you removed the wood retaining wall?
The old court, it's still there. We kept the foundation from the community building, which is what you suggested when we met. I guess it was last fall.
Yep. So you've got the slab from the community building and then the, the basketball court is still there?
Yeah.
Okay, but the wall is, was taken out?
Yes, both walls are gone.
Okay. So did they just grade back that area back towards the street?
Yes, I'll try to shoot you some pictures this week.
Okay, okay, great. All right, and then, so with basketball court, we can, we can talk about options for that as we work through the, the actual concepts for each park. Basketball court, it's there, people use it. It's not in great shape. A lot of it is in the, in the 50-foot stream buffer. So it's just something we need to look at and figure out the right thing to do. And that will come when we, when we do the, the concepts, that'll be the next stage of this. If you look at the next page, page five, we talked about the playground next to the Ball Field. So the playground is in really good shape. The restrooms are in really good shape. That was all reiterated in the survey responses. People like that playground, it's used a lot, it is in good shape. The biggest thing that we recommend there, like we just talked about, would be shade. So that would be one of our big recommendations for that playground is adding shade. And that could be shade structured over the play equipment as well as shade structures for seating area. Both of those are really important. All right, page six is the Ball Field itself. So the Ball Field is, is in decent shape, but it's, it's not constructed to any specific regulation size. So it's, it's kind of already used it for, for organized recreation. Plus, it takes up a huge amount of real estate for a single use. And if that single use isn't being used all the time and it's not up to regulation standards, then we, we need to really look at, is it worth keeping that resource or opening that up to be used for, for multiple activities? So that's something that we had talked about in an original plan that was done a few years ago. And that's, that's still something that we would, that we'll look at in this concept as well. So that's the Ball Field. The next page, page seven, I did want to just note, we didn't have a picture of it necessarily, but I wanted to note the monument sign near the playground. That's in, in decent condition, but that's also an opportunity to potentially create an attractive gateway as you enter the city. So that could be done with, with additional landscaping to beautify that area and kind of make a little statement for curb appeal right there at that, at that corner. Since that's a primary entrance into the city, that's a logical place for a landscaped gateway into the city. So I wanted to mention that. We look at the, at the drives going down behind the Ball Field. So the drive itself is in decent shape, it's very narrow, the, the shoulders are eroded. There's some drainage issues back there. And depending on what we end up doing with that area, if the Ball Field goes away, if there's some other resources back there, that may just become part of the trail. Or it may be additional vehicular access for additional parking. We'll have to look at, at the best use for that. The next page, page eight, is the Kinn Park, right there at the marble facility. So this one, that people do use that, that playground. It's not in great shape and we've talked about that. The equipment's old and dated. It needs some attention, it needs some significant investment. So I don't know, where does that stand at the moment? Last couple of times we've talked, it sounded like there was potentially some movement on going ahead with updating that equipment. Is that still moving forward or?
We are, we're looking at it now, Michael. We've got a lead that, that's come out and is putting together some, some stuff for us as far as drawings and things like that. We're trying to, going to get a couple of other people. We're trying to, gonna get a couple of other people, I'll make some phone calls. Hopefully I'll know back this week, but we're gonna get some folks to come out and look and give us some, we're gonna have some multiple ideas for the council to look at, but right now, it is the goal to, to update that area.
Okay. All right. Yeah, this, in, in looking at it in the context of the entire system, the question that we had was because of the condition it's in, the location, the amount of investment that it would take to, to bring this up to code, to, to make it safe and enjoyable, was, was really, you know, is it, is it worth spending that money there? That, you know, you have a playground just down the street. But if enough people use this and there's enough interest in both playgrounds, then absolutely makes sense. So I just wanted to, to kind of bring that up and ask that question to you guys. We can certainly talk about that more when we start working on the concepts.
Okay.
All right. The next parcel was page 11, that's the Blue Ridge Avenue parcel. And I believe Kelsey said that that, the building there had been removed as well?
Yes, the building was removed and we actually do have a community garden in the front area, like the area of the picture at the bottom. There is a community garden there right now.
Okay, great. All right, yeah, this, obviously this parcel is the, the single biggest amount of undeveloped land that you have. So it's a big opportunity from that standpoint. The biggest challenge for developing this is obviously gonna be the slopes, the grades on that site. So that's just, you know, working through concepts, figuring out what we, you know, what they, what you guys wanna do with that, with that site. That'll, that'll be the single biggest challenge is how we deal with the slopes. But that's, that's not.
This is the one where we talked about. Yeah, Michael, this is the, this is the parcel where we had talked about putting the city home.
Right, right. Is that still in the works or still on the table or?
It is.
Is a bit of change to that?
Yeah, there's some changes to that one.
Okay. Next page, page 12, the half basketball court. So again, the, the big thing we wanted to mention there was, was making sure that we, that we deal with that parking issue for the church. The half basketball court that's there, you know, everybody knows, that's, it's, it's really, really small. It's in pretty bad shape. So, you know, one thought with that is could we, could we do both? Could we improve the parking and design that area in a way that, that you can use the parking surface to play basketball? So that it's serving double duty. We need to, to work through when that parking lot is used, what it's used for, when people are using the basketball court. But that's a, that's a, an idea that, that we wanted to talk to you guys about and see if that might be a feasible solution where we could just do both things at the same time. Where you wouldn't have to necessarily have a separate basketball court. But you could put up a hoop, you could put up a net to catch the ball so they don't run downhill. And you could potentially use the, the parking lot. It could double as a, as a basketball area.
I think the last time that I can, well, it, it's used on Sunday mornings by the church. The kids that play basketball there usually walk there. It's the kids that live off Pickens Street.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah.
So that, that may be a, you know, maybe a good, good solution, especially given the fact that, that the water tower half of that piece is now being given back to Pickens County, is that right?
No, it's been given back to the original owner.
Okay, okay. So anyway, again, we'll, we'll work through different options for that with the concept plan. But that, that area, regardless of, of what the final solution is, that area does need some attention. And then, go ahead.
I said agreed, I agree.
Okay, good. Then that, that pocket park, kind of catty-corner to that across the street, that's a decent little park. It's got that pavilion. Last time we met, we talked about potentially adding a grill there, which I think would be a great amenity for that pocket park. Another thing we wanna look at is access. If, obviously people can access that, people that live around there can access that on foot. Is there a way to incorporate, I think there's a, a little payoff area behind the pavilion. I won't know if that is.
It's, no, it's diagonal though to the park. So if somebody didn't wanna walk there, they could park at the, they could park where the basketball court's at.
Exactly.
Yeah. And I'm gonna ask the council real quick, are we still planning on putting picnic tables there and a grill and getting that taken care of?
I think it's a big good idea. That's what we planned on doing when.
Yeah, I think that, that's something that, that we are, we are, the council's looking at doing when we make some of these small changes here in the summer. So, yeah, we do have that on our, on our agenda to, to add the picnic tables. I think two picnic tables and then a grill there. One of those standard grills, so. But yeah, I agree. And then the, the parking is just where the, about the half basketball court's at.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. The last item on here is a soft surface trail. And we've, we've talked a lot about that. You guys still moving forward with trying to do the barrel surfacing?
Yeah, we have bids to open tonight for that.
Okay, great. All right. That would be one of the main things for that. The other thing I wanted to mention there, I just wanna mention this tonight. Not necessarily something that we have to do anything about at the moment. But the, the trail goes out to Laurel Lake Drive. And there's a little trailhead there on Camp Road. There's no crosswalk and that is a state route. So if you were to do any sort of actual signed or marked crossing there, that would be really difficult probably to get permitted through T-Dot.
But the city technically, the city technically owns that road and we're responsible for all maintenance.
So that section of the, of Camp Road is not saved?
They actually contemplated giving it back during one of the last things that came up because some of the other, it was going through some of the other cities too. And it didn't go through, so the city's still responsible for that.
Wow, okay. Cause it was listed as State Route 372, but.
That's where the, the entrance, there's an entrance and exit ramp there. And then if you, if you go south from there, it picks back up at the traffic light on the ball ground.
Okay. Interesting. Well, okay, so if the city owns that section of the road, it would make it a lot easier if you did want to do an actual crossing. The, it's a tricky issue because we've, we've got a trailhead that's sort of encouraging people from a neighborhood across the street to access the trailhead, but there's no marked crossing.
Yeah, and there's also a road right there, there, there too. If you're coming from Pickens County, if you're coming from Pickens County down, there's a curve.
Yeah, yeah. And, and people are obviously going at high speeds on that road as well, so. The, the data on that actually indicates that crossing like that is technically safer if it's not marked. I, I know that seems counterintuitive, but if it's marked, there becomes a sense of, potentially a false sense of security that pedestrians have. If they're in a marked crosswalk, they feel safer, like cars should see them, but that's not necessarily the case. So it's probably something that you wanna just keep as is. We just wanted to, to point that out. Because, you know, it's a great amenity, people wanna use that, they wanna access the trail. There's a neighborhood right across the street. So you're gonna have, I mean, I'm sure you have people that are crossing that street on foot now.
We do.
So really, I mean, just keeping an eye on that area, anything that, that can be done to, to make sure that visibility is as good as it can be there. And that maybe, maybe people are, maybe one thing that we could do would be to add signs for pedestrians on either side of the street to make sure that they stop and look both ways and be as careful as they can be trying to cross that street. It, it would just be, it would be a real unfortunate thing if there were accidents out there. So this, this is something to, to keep in mind. Again, we can talk about other options for how to, how to deal with that moving forward. So that's really it. If there are any other questions or comments, I'm happy to answer those.
What's our next step?
The next step for us is to go ahead and start on the actual concepts. So we will go ahead and start drawing up conceptual plans for each of these areas. And we'll do that in a holistic way that, that looks at the entire system. And then, and then, once we get those plans together, it'll probably take us several weeks to, to pull those drawings together. We will schedule to come up and we'll come meet with you in person and go through, give a presentation of those plans. And at that point, we will get your feedback and comments, input on those concept plans so that we can incorporate all that and refine the plans into a, into a final master plan.
Okay. Any questions from Michael Bass? All right, Michael, I appreciate it. Feel free to reach out to us if you have anything else or you need any additional information.
Okay, I'll let you guys know. We don't need anything else at the moment, but if we have any other questions moving forward, I'll certainly let you know. And I'll, I'll get you a schedule on when we can expect to review those concept plans.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, y'all have a good evening.
All righty. Okay. Backtrack to A for trail resurfacing request for bid opening. This one here is from Triscapes Construction and Utility Maintenance, receipt 6-6, 2022. So this bid, this proposed bid is for $251,213.95.
$251, what?
$251, $231.95. And this is from Triscapes. The next one is going to be from Steel and Associates, receipt 6-6. This next one is from Justin Brown, B&amp;B Lawn Service and Landscaping. $54,500. We live on the existing north lawn, the Watway Trail. Slate Gate Trail Next, approximately six feet wide, four inches deep. Edging along the Walkin Trail and sides of the Slate Gate Trail Next. He doesn't say what he's edging it with. This one here, I'll go ahead and mention this one here, that was $70,000. This would be, it says, borders will be provided prior to award. And it says includes floor inch steel edging. Installed on both sides. The next one is going to be.
Holcomb.
Holcomb Grading.
He did mention on the outside that it includes several things that are not in the bid, including several areas that were, because he has some drainage stuff that all has included.
This then includes everything, including, including adding three to four pipes for drainage issues that wasn't noted on the bid, but bidder wanted to make sure it was understood. Thank you, Kelsey. This one is $42,500. Price includes riprap at both bridges, bridge crossing as well as to be able to, able to cross ditches and then stacked when done.
And line the base with it.
Estimated 60 days before we could start the project, we would do regular, we do require deposit for material. Okay. All right. So our bids are, again. Our bids again are Triscape came in at $251,231. Steel and Associates, $70,870. Justin Brown at $54,500 and Holcomb Grading at $42,500. I did notice about this one here is it didn't, just says remove any remaining current surface material. Look, this is Brown, Justin Brown, little and smooth, I never forget. This is what we had in there. Small orders, 30 days, I noticed.
I wonder why that first one was there?
Um, let me see, cause, cause it was, I'm gonna get.
By your computer stats? They're standing.
Let me see, where he, he did say that, I, I, I looked at the same thing I was like, oh. Um. Pretty much just what we had in the package, that's it.
It must be real busy.
You wouldn't be surprised at um what things cost at Milton, what these bigger cities pay, but yeah, it's a thing. So um with this in mind, um, I know we've used above in the past.
We'll say too, that he said that there is, when they're gonna get the material, they do have to give advance notice to get the amount. I think, I can't remember how many tons he said it was, like a hundred ninety-six thousand, I think, I'm off the memory.
Okay.
That, the delay that they would have be eaten up by part of that, giving advance notice for the amount that they need.
Yeah. Um, I was gonna say, uh, um, going with it now, lots of price in at the forty-two five. Does anybody have any questions?
This will make it ADA compliant, correct?
Yes.
The product is ADA compliant. I don't know if it's gonna make the actual entire trail ADA compliant because there's areas of the trail that are not like even like stepping up onto the bridges. And some of that was stuff we checked on when we tried to get the grant, the material itself is. So it's either a wheelchair, bike, stroller, all that stuff. And you may have more information on that than.
I can tell you, yeah, combined, the trail itself generally, if it's not a, if it's just a, here's a trail you can use, it's generally not really looked at in ADA. Now, if you put in a trail to connect point A to point B and you're offering services, then it can get a little hairy on whether it has to be compliant or not. Technically, right now, I don't think it would have to be brought fully up to standard.
We're not gonna back end off to, will help with some of the mobility issues.
Doing away with that, that's actually about the worst on the trail.
Mm-hmm.
And he said it was like six weeks out.
He said he's running on sixty days, cause he's got a couple of other jobs that he's already in.
Which is really good. I wish my contractors were only wearing sixty days. So.
There's someone waiting that long for concrete, I don't know.
My granddaddy might four weeks.
Justin Brown was six weeks. He wasn't.
I don't know, but it can check it. I think cause when Holcomb dropped it off, it just made a couple of things to make sure that it was. But it was trying, but the big thing too was the fact that there were some water issues that were gonna be addressed.
That's where you're talking, not putting that back in.
Yeah, and that's included, it's not additional.
Yeah.
I mean, I like the work he did down at, at the, at the wall. And I like the, um, you know, the way he left it. So it looks nice, it looks clean, it looks neat.
I'm good with it.
You gotta make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a, can I get a motion? Are, are we gonna, so let, let's go ahead and just say, um, are you in favor of Holc, of Holcomb Grading at forty-two thousand five? William?
It seems like the best deal, he's taking into account range.
Okay, you're, you're good with that?
I'm good with it.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve, um, to award this bid for the walk-in trail for forty-two thousand, five hundred to, to Holcomb Grading?
I make a motion.
James, can I get a second?
Say it.
Nathan, all in favor? You now. All righty. Next step is going to be our fifty-four, twenty, twenty-three budget, general fund and CFP.
The budget is the same as um what we had discussed the last meeting, the presented thread. So there's really no changes there. CFP's same thing, uh, the, the actual budget is the first sheet we'll see. And then the second part is the um, the actual book document.
Gotcha. I know I asked you guys to go home, take a look at these two documents and come back with any questions. Does anybody have any questions regarding this evening? Sergeant Williams, no. James?
Yes.
Nathan? Question, make it clear. All right. So um, can I get a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three uh budget?
I'll make a motion for the twenty-twenty-three.
William Taylor, can I get a second? James, all in favor? You now. Can I get a motion to approve the general fund and capital improvement budget?
I'll make a motion to approve the capital improvement.
James, can I get a second? William Taylor, all in favor? You now, thank you very much. Um, the kiddie park, which I think we pretty much discussed, we, we've started out with fifty thousand. I think that's on the, um, I'm, uh, I think that's on the low end for everything, but it's a good starting point. Um, I don't think we're, we don't have to bid, but I mean, at least we've got an idea of what we're looking at. So we do have the funding for that out of Pickens County um facility, so we're good there. And it won't come out of our park funds for master plan, so that's even better. Um, I hope to hear back from her soon, I'm sure you guys will as well. Um, any questions on that kiddie park?
Yeah, I think we, once we come to see what price range it will.
Okay. Do you want us to be looking for um a picnic table for that little park up there and a, um, and a grill?
Yeah. My nest, I guess somebody could probably type. Yeah.
I do.
Grill have to be made in, you know.
Well, it's what, you can get those ones that stand there, made out of metal.
Like concrete in the ground or whatever.
Yeah.
Or some of the campsite.
Yeah, like the campsite.
The hard to break ones.
Yeah, the hard to break ones. Yeah.
I just don't wanna totally off.
No, you, you get cemented in, so. All right, all right, so. All right.
Like the bench, bench that would gas this at the other part, the plastic.
Yeah, those composite, like those. So picnic table.
They're made, they seem like they're made very well.
All right, next step is gonna be new business, um, irrigation for Kennesaw Avenue project. Um, we did get a bid from Ju, or a quote from Justin Brown for fifty-five hundred, so it was over. And I thought that was a little high, but we asked Lori, since it's gonna benefit them, they won't have to be coming down here deep watering these things every week um to give us a price on putting in a sprinkler system. My idea of a sprinkler system is coming off of our water, um, where we've got our water made there.
From the community, we have the power that we have.
And the power that we have, so it won't cost money there. We're gonna come off of it and, and come straight down the backside of the um, of the sod and then tee into it at different intervals so we can get, you know, a good irrigation water in the system. So that's, that's my idea. Does anybody have anything better than that?
They're talking about the park.
Good plans.
Kennesaw Avenue, all our trees and stuff, we've gotta have, we've gotta have somebody to water them.
Yeah, well, I, I got mixed up when you started, but we're just bringing the water line front.
From the Rebecca Lodge. So we would bring it, we would just bring it over and then bring it straight up Kennesaw.
Come up the right away.
Yeah.
Yeah, is Justin doing this or?
No, he just sent a price in. And we, I put the quote in there, but we've also asked Lori and if, if we were gonna go with that, we'd have to give a more price in anyway. We're interested in that one.
So who's gonna do this?
We don't know.
We've asked for an amendment to see if they can do it, the people that have the, that it benefits them to put one in so they don't have to waste time coming out. So hopefully we'll get a better deal on it and we will, we'll vote on it our next week. And yeah, we, they don't wanna do plant replacements, that's kinda expensive, so. And we've already got some plants that are, they're, we're having a hot summer and the plants are already, yeah, they're guilty. So, um, so just wanted to make everybody aware of that, that, that we do have that going on. It was removed, it was in the original drawings, but then it was removed when we were trying to save some funds and it just didn't get found yet, so. Um, anybody have any questions or ideas concerning that? I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at ideas.
Do we need to add that just waters that area or is there the new bank there too need to be covered?
I think if we run it behind the, um, run it tobacco, that water's gonna come, yeah. It's gonna come down. So if we wanna put a head, you know, come right off of it, put a head to water that bank, we could, but the bank seems to be doing well. It's about ready to be.
The side of the trees is, what's gonna die if it doesn't.
Exactly. So that's where we are with that. I'll keep everybody posted. Appreciate you guys again, meeting with Southeast for the, for the kiddie park and all of that. Um, and if there's no more questions regarding that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute, we need to discuss something.
Yes, sir.
Is the railroad thing?
The railroad drop.
Well, I had the guy one representative from the railroad came in, was it last Thursday, I think? And asked if it was okay to close the Spring Street exit, so we would have, or crossover. We have Blue Ridge and we have Dogwood Pass. And James and I talked about this numerous times. Apparently it was voted on back in the early two thousands and it just wasn't ever done. But we don't wanna do, um, to go ahead without it being, you know, you should literally have three crossings right in a row and they really like blow that train horn going through there.
Numerous times. And it would reduce that for some of the people there.
It would only have two crossings instead of three, they have to blow it every crossing so many times.
What it was, when they built the substation down here, that was in the city then. And they needed to cross off Highway five to get to the substation. Well, you gotta give up a crossing somewhere on the, on the line to get another one added in. And that plan then was to come straight out Marble Quarry and get on three seventy-two there and have a red light to it and just to extend that crossing on up and that took care of that problem too.
Okay.
And Spring Street would exit outbound to Blue Ridge, which is, it's kind of goes right over the kids.
So it's already been voted on, it just was never.
He was on council when it happened.
I was on council when that happened.
Do we need to vote him? If it was already voted on, Jeff?
Probably, since it's been a little bit.
It would be a lot that they asked to dig through.
Spring Street.
Unless, right, unless you could easily find the minutes and it's.
They're in there, it's just having to know, or knowing when it was put on the agenda, so I think it's.
You're talking about the middle crossing.
Yes, yeah, that middle.
So you're going to have to.
Platform for the railroad.
For the city, you're going to have to, I mean, just vote to close the street at that location.
Yeah, cause it's weird, it's weird, cause it has two, would they have an exit that goes down to Dogwood and one that goes on to Blue Ridge now?
Do we, what's the timeline this has to be done?
He didn't say, he just didn't know. I know it had been voted on, cause James and I've had this conversation numerous times. There's actually plans for that whole industrial area, like a road to go down, other, like a cul-de-sac thing coming off of it for businesses. And everything was voted and then for some reason it just kinda stopped.
Now that's been talked about since I've been on, but I ain't been on that long.
We do get lots of complaints about.
Noise.
Can you pull up the, can you pull up the minutes?
We don't know for sure, that's why I go look through. We think it was two thousand four, I'm sure.
Okay, let's do that.
And not only that, in terms of legal stuff, I mean, if we're, you know, I mean, I guess that effectively closes that.
It's one crossing, you still have two.
So people have to keep going, there may be some notice we have to give.
Yeah.
Same side, you have to put up an notice, sure. Cause we're, we're still closing the road, uh, so there may be something that we have to do.
So basically, we've got the road that runs up.
It would be like twenty or thirty feet of it, cause I think the road originally, the way it looks is like it was came from Labor Avenue right next to the park area. And then there's just this other offshoot that goes over right next to the, um, Gold Depot, like the foundation building.
It is, it is for a street or it's also.
Uh, we always just said it was Spring Street, I don't, I don't know if there's a street sign there or not, you know.
What is that road that we've closed and put the cul-de-sac there?
Spring Street on Kennesaw.
It's called, it's Spring Street.
Yeah, it would just cut down any, try, any cut through traffic, cause people loop through there, they don't wanna wait for people.
I think there is a sign right there.
I know there's a sign somewhere, I'm just not sure if it's at Dogwood or if it's at Blue Ridge. Could be.
I wanna say so.
I don't pay attention to it. Could be.
Want to see if there's anything in special note in there? And if you have any kind of things.
Fun reading.
Someone made it a month. James has to do it right.
Eighteen years, yes.
I thought he needed a year.
We think it was two thousand three. We knew the property changed here in two thousand three.
I know, I know, um, Florida followed out of Tampa.
Yeah, we pulled the property record, so it was sold, it was two thousand three, so, and it was December two thousand three.
Okay.
So we'd have to go into two thousand four.
We'll pull it out and we'll get you some information, um, and then we can look at it. We'll visit again when we come back from meeting in July. There we go with that? Okay.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Nathan, can I get a second?
Second.
There, all in favor? You now, thank you guys.